All rise please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening everyone. Welcome. Happy St. Patrick's Day. Before the start of tonight's meeting, the board met an executive session to discuss some personnel and contract issues with the PBA. We have a special presentation tonight. The Pursuit to Resolution 1502 Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors created the Unsung Hero Community Service Award. And the award acknowledges and recognizes residents who are individuals that do a lot for the community but do it without recognition and do it selflessly and do it because they're good communities minded and they put a lot of time and effort into working to make a better world in this area, in our Doylestown world. And today, the award is going to go to such an individual and I'm going to ask Rick Colello to read his nomination letter. Rick, you want to take on that?
Doylestown Township Bucks County, Pennsylvania proclamation.
Can you read your letter? It really doesn't matter, go ahead.
I don't think he has his letter with him.
He doesn't?
No, he has the proclamation.
Okay. Do you want me to call out?
I think you better call out who the... We haven't said who it is.
Go ahead. Read it.
A proclamation of the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors recognizing Ed Ebenbach for service to our community and naming him the 2015 Doylestown Township Unsung Hero.
Ed Ebenbach, can you please come out of that little room?
Come on down.
Come on.
Guess the price, right?
Come on down.
Ed. You can finish reading it.
Whereas Ed Ebenbach has been a resident of Doylestown Township since 2002 and whereas Ed Ebenbach currently serves on the township's telecommunications advisory board and ways and means committee and whereas Ed Ebenbach developed a financial modeling system that has improved township financial planning and whereas Ed Ebenbach aided substantially in the creation and improvement of the township government access channel and whereas Ed Ebenbach contributed significantly to the township franchise negotiations and whereas Ed Ebenbach shared his years of expertise from leading the Horsham Chamber of Commerce and whereas Ed Ebenbach has given his time, energy, and resources selflessly without seeking recognition or notoriety. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors recognizes Ed Ebenbach for his service and selfless giving to the Doylestown community. We hereby name him the 2015 Doylestown Township Unsung Hero.
Let's all go up. Come on, let's all go up and do this.
Come on, Ed's speech.
Come on guys.
Oh yeah. He'd like to hear me.
Ed, we're so happy and proud to work with you. We really appreciate you. You make us feel really good. You make us, you know, our job easier and in consideration of this award, your service, our appreciation, we give you this beautiful plaque, this brochure tile, Doylestown Township's 2015 Unsung Hero presented to Ed Ebenbach by the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors today, March 17, 2015. Congratulations.
This is terrific.
Thank you. Thank you.
Really appreciate it. Good job.
Can we get everyone's picture?
Sure.
Picture for Karen.
Am I right?
You're right.
If I have a whole...
The light goes a little more. Thanks. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it.
Now you heard in that recognition that Ed Ebenbach created the model for which our financial picture has been painted for the last couple of years. And segueing right into our next presentation by the president, or excuse me, Chairman of the Ways and Means Committee, his quarterly report, Lee Schwartz. I'm going to get you again.
Okay. Good evening everyone.
Good evening.
Let's see.
Good job, Rick. I think he was really close.
I think so. Well, I can't see that from here, but I hope everybody else can. So I'll work from the machine that I have in front of me. Of course, I'm Lee Schwartz. I'm happy to be here on behalf of the Ways and Means Committee and I'm presenting the 2014 preliminary unaudited results. Most of the information's in. My esteemed colleague, Ed Ebenbach, and Ken Wallace, our finance manager, again have done an amazing job of refining the information as it's pulled together, made it much more easy for you to see it at a glance and really get a picture of the township in a minimal amount of information with a maximum impact. So this evening, while I handed out earlier the complete report for last year, we're going to just talk about the executive summary, which is on page one. And of course, we'll start with revenue. First thing I think's important to point out is that on the EIT, we're showing that it's $56,000 higher than 2013 actual. Now, the interesting piece of information with that is that it would lead you to believe that in the township in general, there was a 1.5% wage increase because that's all our income tax went up. And that probably tracks well with inflation, which was 1.5% in '13 and 1.6% in '14. But you can see that in general, you know, wages throughout the township would probably rise even with inflation. Now, real estate and transfer taxes were up 22% over what we planned and we seem to have seen a huge surge at the end of the year. And I guess for the realtors in the audience, I guess that means you have some good times coming or at least returning to even better times for this year, so that's a good sign. And then the other item, I like to focus on three, you'll see on capital financing and grants. We had planned on, we had budgeted $1.181 million for last year and only consumed 721. Primarily, that's because some of the projects around the original docket were deferred or moved to another, you know, some to 2015, some to 2016. But that by itself was a $459,000 reduction in what we thought we'd bring in or post for grants last year. So the bottom line there is that total revenue for last year was 11,000, oh, excuse me, $11,495,000 or 626. Now again, we'll highlight just a couple of the key things and expenses, but some of the things that should be worth pointing out are, police came in at 3% under budget, primarily by delaying a new hire and by reducing overtime and some of their court And someone on staff probably deserves some credit for utilities going down about 22% under budget, but we ate that right up in road salt and other road supplies. So, you know, you find it in one place and you give it away in another. But the big drop, you'll notice down at the bottom where it shows capital projects. Let me get to the right spot there. There we go, at the very bottom of the second section there. Capital spending was initially projected to be $2.9 million, which was a huge number compared to our history, but it was a real number based on projects that were in the queue for last year. We ended up spending $1.9 million, which was a million dollars less, but should be pointed out that that's over twice what we had accomplished in any of the last few years. So that between the township staff and the outsourced services that we purchased, we were able to accomplish a lot of what was on the list of projects to get done last year. So I'd say overall, that was a good job. And again, I guess the thing to point out there is that we want you to keep that in mind, that we spent a million dollars less than planned. So expenses were $12,588,500 for 2014. So when we get down to what does all that really mean? Well, revenue versus expenses is the way you take a look at it. We took in $11,495,000. We spent $12,588,000. And again, that's after we took a million dollars out of the plan. And if this was a private sector, we'd say we lost $563,000. But that brings us to the area of fund balances. Now, a few years back, we dodged a bullet when we thought we'd run out of money long before 2014. And we stabilized our receipts and expenses and we rebuilt the fund balances. This year, 2014 however, is the first year that I've been involved in the Ways and Means Committee that we've actually eaten into our savings. We originally planned to eat into it about $1.2 million. The end is, we only ate into it about $562,000. But again, I would point out, that's mostly because we reduced the capital spending by deferring projects. And basically, that gives you the complete overview in a few short slides of how we performed last year. I guess what I'd like to do is point out that this is the beginning of a long-term trend, so we need to pay attention more closely again to where we're going in the future. And I'd like to think that we're also teeing up the discussion for the first spring budget session that we're going to have working together. At that time, we'll present again another look at, you know, a fresh look at the five year plan of expenses versus what we think we're going to have in income and take a look at what that impact is on the fund balances. So bottom line is, we've got a healthy fund balance in general, either restricted, which means only for certain purposes, and unrestricted for operating expenses. But we have turned the corner where instead of those balances growing, they are starting to decline and we are planning to consume them. So we just need to be careful with, as we go forward. Good planning on our part will make things go smoothly. And that's my quick summary of 2014. Any questions?
That's really good. Thank you.
That was very nice.
I just report the news.
Well done.
Thank you.
I even understood it.
Well, then it was worth the presentation.
This committee is so smart. These guys really work hard, guys. I mean, generically, there's women on the committees here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Comes Young Sung here. I'll put the lights back on.
He's preparing a video about himself by now.
All right, the kickoff budget meeting that Ed's talking about, excuse me, Lee's talking about is April 9th at 4:00 PM. So everyone is welcome to that. It'll be a public meeting. Well, some of, I won't be here, but we'll all be here other than me. So, and within Ways and Means Committee, right?
Yes, absolutely. And it's April 9th at 4 o'clock, correct?
Correct. It's April 9th at 4 o'clock. Okay. I'm looking at the wrong agenda. Public comment. Who's going to be? Any public comment? Mr. Everett?
I'm here.
Yes, please take the podium, identify yourself, even though we all know who you are.
Do you mind if I?
Oh, no problem.
It'll just confuse me. John Everett, 2111 Turk. And just to bookend on your unsung hero, I had occasion last week to go to the website and watch last month's meeting on video and was surprised at how good the quality was. And so I went and said something to Ed last night when I came in, but he explained that there's been improvements and it's appreciated because one of the reasons I went and reviewed last month's meeting is because of some conversations I had with a friend and the article in the newspaper with reference to the resolution that was passed last week. And I felt that I'd like to come up and acknowledge Mr. Colello's. I'm mangling it, I'm sorry, but you know who you are.
I know who I am.
I wanted to publicly acknowledge and thank him for his nuance and what I felt was a fair reading of the duties and responsibilities of this board in terms of passing that resolution. And so I wanted to acknowledge his stand and that's pretty much it. And go Irish.
Thank you. Like your pin. All right, any other public comment? Okay, announcements. The next meeting of this board is Tuesday, April 7th at 7:00 PM. The Cherry Blossom trip to Washington DC is March 21st, $50 a person. You sign up through our website or you can call Doylestown Township and learn how to sign up through the telephone. Doylestown Township Blood Drive is Friday, March 27th, 2 to 7:00 PM at the Activity Center. And you can register at redcrossblood.org. Potholes, to report your potholes on state roads, call 1-800-FIXROAD. A list of all of our state roads in the township can be found on the website at doylstownpa.org under departments/roads. To report potholes in Doylestown Township roads, call our office, 348-9915. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the February 17, 2015 meeting. I'll vote to approve the minutes. It's a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, concerns, corrections? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, correspondence. All right, another nod to the Ways and Means Committee. Stephanie, take it.
Just announcing that the townships received the 2015 Governor's Award for Local Government Excellence in the recognition of our contribution to local government in Pennsylvania for the theme in fiscal accountability and best management practices. And that is for our work with our Ways and Means Committee and our budget process. And the board will be formally recognized in Harrisburg on the 15th of April.
So congratulations, Ways and Means. Ed, Lee, good job. Thank you, Stephanie.
Yeah, I'd like to make a comment there. It's a recognition to the Ways and Means, but it's also the staff, it's the Board of Supervisors, it's everybody involved in this process because they really do challenge what we're doing and how we can make it better. And if you don't continue to do that, then obviously there will be problems. So it is, I think it is recognition of the committee and what they bring forward and everyone, the staff supporting it, the Board of Supervisors supporting them. So everybody's really working hard to make the financial picture for the township a much better one. So it's a job well done and well organized.
Absolutely. Anybody else? Thank you. Next item on the agenda, solicitor's report.
Nothing that I won't discuss later in the agenda, Madam Chairperson.
Chief?
Yeah, just real quick. I made some modifications to my monthly report that's always in your packet here and I just wanted to give you an idea of what you're looking at and some basic changes. Basically, in the past, I think down the left-hand column, there was like some dates and across the top, or excuse me, down the left-hand column, there was dates and across the top of the border along the top, it was conflicting. So what I basically did was take all the pages and put dates all the way across the top and down the left side is types of incidents for ease of reading. The other thing I did was add, the second column down here is a 2014 monthly average of what took those type of incidents that took place last year. And then the next column over is a 2015 year-to-date average. So you can kind of get a ballpark where we were last year and where we're at this year. And then in the monthly columns, January, February, you'll see things highlighted in red. Those are things that spiked above last year's monthly average. So it gives you an idea of where we're at in any particular month. It'll be a running total. You're going to see reds and stuff fluctuate throughout the month. Now, this first page you're looking at, I'm going to try and keep it consistent every month that it goes in your packet, is the overview, okay? At the top here, you've got your Part 1 and Part 2 offenses, and I'm not going to get into what those are, but if you go to page 2, it's going to break down those offenses into Part 1 and Part 2. So you have first thing on page 1 and then page 2. Then the next thing, if you go back to page 1, is your arrests, Part 1 and Part 2. Pages 3 and 4 on your packet are breakdowns of adults versus juveniles. Page 3 is adults, page 4 is juveniles. And then the last page that you have in the packet is, excuse me, real quick, let me thumb to it real quick, is basically your accident information that we compile. And again, it's the same type of thing. So you're reading it, it's a little bit easier to read, a little bit easier to follow, and you're going to be able to see more of a trend as we progress through the year. So it's basically, I just wanted to let you guys have an idea of the change in the packet. I think it lasts, previously it was only three pages of report, now it's looking down into five and it's a little bit easier flow.
Yeah, thank you. Director Ben, do you have?
That's all I have.
Thanks, Chief.
Nothing at this time.
Manager?
We need to set the date for the annual rodent, spring rodent inspection. I'm suggesting that we do it at 3:00 on the 7th of April. We have a meeting that day.
We have a meeting Saturday. Everyone go with that time and date? Yes? Okay? So be it.
Thank you.
Supervisors, Sean?
Yes, thank you. I have two comments to report on, two committees rather. One, our Bike and Hike Committee that met this morning, just a little bit different report and such that we have a Trail Awareness Day. It seems far off. It's in September 27th. It's our second annual Trail Awareness Day that brings to the bike and hike system. We were brainstorming this morning on a couple of ideas. One, if nothing else, to try to get the word out about the event. While we had a great turnout last year, we'd like to build on that. There was the idea of working in cooperation with some of the different runs from the 5K of the county race series, using that as an opportunity. I think we're going to do that in Memorial Day for the Memorial Day run. But if you have, if anybody here or anybody watching or knows of a way that we could cooperate with and which we could promote the Trail Awareness Day in the fall, something that, you know, is a good segue to it, something I guess biking or hiking related or running, that would be appreciated. They could come to one of our Bike and Hike meetings or I guess give us a word here at the township. Again, September 27th, the second annual Trail Awareness Day. And regarding our Central Bucks Senior Task Force, I've reported previously on the new format that we're having as a interview format. We do have two upcoming speakers. One is State Rep. Marguerite Quinn and one will be interviewing Mayor Strauss from the borough. If anybody again has any ideas or like any contributions in any way, either to do an interview or be interviewed or an idea for one, we would take them. Another committee that Ed also, or Unsung Hero also participates, works on and is facilitating all that recording and that. You know, that's all I had to report. Thank you.
Ken, do you have anything?
Just a couple of EAC announcements, just as reminders. We have the Native Garden Work Session that we're doing on Friday and Saturday up at the Native Garden and that's at 9:00. Also Arbor Day is in April 25th. That will be at 9:00, so volunteers certainly appreciate and you can do there. We have our, the Spring Bird Walk coming up on April 25th, 8 to 10. And the Yard Waste Recycling starts up this Saturday from 9 to 11. So if you have stuff to drop off, please drop that off. And you already made the comment about the budget workshop happening on April 9th, so we're good there. And just last thing, it's like to thank the chief for taking a look at that data and trying to develop those trends. I think that's a real good idea and I appreciate his work on that.
Thank you.
A couple of comments, Rick.
I was wondering if EAC could take a look at the options that might be available to us now for disposition of electronics now that the counties are no longer doing it.
I saw that in the paper today. So yeah, we'll, I'll bring that up to them, yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? John? Yes, please. Ed will yell at me.
I just want to know where the Arbor Day meeting is. Need a...
I think there's two spots, isn't there? There's one over Bridge.
There's the one over Bird Blind. Yeah, there's one at Bridge Point and then also there's the Bird Blind is having, there's trees in the Environmental Education Grove.
The Bird Blind?
If you meet in the Kids Castle area, if you go over the bridge in the Environmental Education area.
What's the time on the Bird, Arbor Day? What's the time on that?
Arbor Day is 9:00.
Thanks. Rick, you have anything?
Yes, Public Water and Sewer Committee has an opening. We're very fortunate that one of our residents is interviewed for that position. I'd like to nominate John Canterbury for that position and hope to get support from the rest of the board.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? We interviewed this gentleman earlier today. Comments? All in favor of the motion? Aye. Aye. Thank you. You have any answers?
No, that's it.
I just, since the last meeting, we had a telecommunications advisory board meeting and continuing with some great initiatives and, you know, to some of the comments tonight, they're working very hard and our unsung hero leads as the chair of that committee, Ed, and they're constantly looking for ways to improve communications and I tell you, just being a liaison on that committee just newly in 2015, it's highly informative and I'm learning lots of, lots of different things about how we communicate with our residents and they're all doing great work, so.
Thanks. And the summer, the Summer Concert Series, Sounds of Summer, we're celebrating our 20th anniversary this year and to make it more, you know, just blow it out, we're doing a lot of fundraising and Karen has prepared some lovely sponsorship forms, so please pick them up on your way out. It's about community, leadership, publicity, goodwill. It's a tax deduction. Contribute to the quality of your life, exposure, promote family, entertain clients and friends. Hot link to your website and onsite presence. It's a great opportunity. These events are very well attended and let's really get behind this series this year because it's 20 years, doesn't happen all the time. This is a landmark. And we might have our new band show in place by that time too. So thanks Karen for doing this. They're available. Take one with you. Township Business, the bids for street sweeping for 2015. We have a memo from Dick John dated 3/13.
Yes, we do.
Any questions? You want to speak to the memo, Dick, or?
Yes, this is an extension, one-year extension to Riley Sweeping.
You like these guys.
They've done a good job for us and their amount is not going to be raised for this coming year, so it's going to remain at $38,435.76 for two sweepings during the year.
When's the first one happening, do you know?
It's spring and fall, basically.
Is that after pothole fill or before pothole fill?
After, I would think.
Is there a motion to approve the bid? I'll make a motion to approve.
Second? Just a question, yeah. As far as a mandate to do this, there is a, we have to do this, is that right? Or what's the repercussions if we don't do it?
Well, under the Stormwater Act, the Clean Water Act, we're required to remove X number of pounds of sediment before it goes into a stream bed. And one of the ways you're allowed to do that is to do street sweeping. And we all know that a lot of debris accumulates on the streets. Up in the Pine Run area, we've been able to remove 500 pounds, close to 500 pounds, I'm sorry, 5,000 pounds. And in the Mill Creek Watershed, we've been able to gather in about 300 to 400 pounds. So we are doing our job. We don't do that and work within the restraints of the Clean Streams Act. The fines can be pretty substantial in as much as $10,000 a day. So this is pretty cheap participation.
Okay. Any other, is there a motion, a second? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All right, next is the lawn maintenance page for 2015.
Right, and Dick's provided you a memo again. This is an extension of the contract, correct Dick?
Yes.
And they've signed that. And I know Mr. Snyder, who had asked earlier about what we paid last year, and as Dick had indicated, we went back and looked and we paid a total of $110,600 in the contract last year.
Is there a motion to approve the bid? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And then the road materials bid for 2015. Dick, do you want to?
The road materials bid is a little different. We're part of the Bucks County Consortium and within that consortium, various communities take upon themselves to actually advertise a bid for certain materials or...
Up in the Pine Run area, we've been able to remove 500 pounds, close to 500 pounds, I'm sorry, 5,000 pounds. And in the Mill Creek Watershed, we've been able to gather in about 300 to 400 pounds. So we are doing our job, we don't do that, and work within the restraints of the Clean Streams Act, the fines can be pretty substantial, in as much as $10,000 a day.
Okay.
So this is pretty cheap participation.
Okay.
Any other, is there a motion, a second? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All right. Next is the Lawn Maintenance bid for 2015.
Right, and Dick's provided you a memo, again, this is an extension of the contract, correct Dick?
Yes.
And they've signed that. And I know Mr. Snyder, who had asked earlier about what we paid last year, and as Dick had indicated, we went back and looked, and we paid a total of $110,600 in the contract last year.
Is there a motion to approve the bid? Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
And then the Road Materials bid for 2015. Dick, do you want to?
The Road Materials bid is a little different. We're part of the Buck County Consortium, and within that consortium, various communities take upon themselves to actually advertise a bid for certain materials, or certain other things that everybody uses the same, such as our road materials. And once the bids come back, and are sorted, they're sent out to all the communities, and we make our own appointments or awards for the materials that we particularly use. So that's coming out to, I think, one, two, it looks like five different suppliers of stone and asphalt, and we'll just have to run through them quickly and get some awards. I think the first one on the list is Highway Materials. They're going to provide us with cold patch and QPR cold patch for those duster leaf bottles that show up every winter. The two amounts for each of those is, they both come in at $111.50 per ton delivered to our place of employment. So I do need a vote for more of that.
You can do them all together, okay?
Last two, is there a motion to approve A through E? I'll make a motion to approve. Is there a second? Yes, okay. Questions?
Yeah.
Comments?
Had a couple questions. And this, really, it goes back to some work that was done last year, and as I noticed, and I'm just curious about the process, that I know the township, our staff does X number of miles a year, and then last year we had more miles to do because of the bad winter, and so we contracted some out. But as an example, we had to redo some work on Turkey Lane, or, yeah. And I'm just curious, how, how do we know when we, what is the process to determine that? We just do a top coat, we do base repair, and how we do that? And how do we minimize the amount of redo work that we need to do that we're experiencing this year on Turkey?
Well, most of the road work is tracked through my office. I'm constantly looking, reviewing road conditions, and our road superintendent advises me of conditions which warrant, say, road restoration versus just a patch job. And we do, because we have 76 miles of road, we strive to do at least three roads that are restored each year, and we set aside the money for that. Also, out of that money comes, say, a bridge repair, other things that show up along the roads. But basically, I keep a running total of roads that we've worked on over the years, the kind of money that went into them, the type of repairs that went into them, and we just keep constantly rolling that forward. So maybe in another five or 10 years, you'll be starting to do roads over again. So it's been a ongoing process of mine, in the last 27 years I've been here.
Okay.
So it's, it's definitely a thing where you have to get out and you got to look, you got to figure out what's going on, and make a decision about whether we can do just a little bit, and put the money elsewhere, or whether we actually have to tear something apart, such as Turkey Lane that you talked about. Turkey Lane is a pretty good example of one of the older roads in the township that basically was oil and chip on top of dirt. And you get away sometimes, dry year, you don't have much problem with it, you get a wet year, that recycles itself with a lot of fall and freezing, and they just blow right up on you, and that's what happened with Turkey Lane this year. So it's, sometimes the patches are easy fixes, and sometimes they're not. We had one several years ago, we got on it, and while it started out with about 200 feet, by the time we got done, we were up to 600 feet. It just breaks up under the trucks and the tractors that are working on it, so.
Anybody else? There's a motion, a second? Yes? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
And then next is the Equipment with Operators Rental bid for 2015.
Again, with Dick's memo, and PK Moyer, once again, is the bidder on that one, and we would recommend the approvals.
The low bidder?
Low, yes.
PK Moyer and Son. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
A second? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks. All right. Next item on the agenda, the Arley Grant Adaptive Control Bid for Eastern Road.
Yes, and our traffic engineer is here, in case we have any specific questions. But the board will recall that we received $390,000 in Arley Grant money, and that's 100% reimbursable, including the engineer's time for those projects. The initial LED signals, which was the 90,000, came in under, significantly under bid, and actually ended up spending only about 20, a little over 22,000. We were able to transfer the balance into the Adaptive Control Project, and we have bid that now, and the low bid on that has come from Armor and Son in the amount of $118,150. And Dave has already spoken with PennDOT, and they're okay with the bidder and information provided. The second part of that is the equipment that will need to be purchased as well, and that is from, the equipment for $186,000 from InSync Real-Time Adaptive Traffic Control, and also the Econolite and the $11,750 that goes with the equipment. And the reason for that is that that is all proprietary equipment that goes into those controllers. And so at this time, we recommend the bids for Armor and Sons, as well as the equipment purchases, as outlined by Panoni and Associates, and as I said...
198, not 186. I'm looking for 186. Maybe I heard wrong.
That's on the, on the memo from?
Yeah, 198 for Car and Duff for the equipment.
No, the, Car and Duff is, it's 118 for...
So we're going with Armor?
Yes.
And where is the equipment?
The equipment is in the memo information from Dave's, and Dave's memo, from Signal Control for $11,750, and Econolite information for 186.6. It's all in.
I see, I see two, I see two...
There's two, there's...
Two memos, right?
Yes, there's two memos.
Okay, and the first one is to approve Armor and Son at 118.
Correct.
The second one is to approve, what, the whole 390?
No, the 186, or the, I'm sorry, 186 and the 11,750.
186.
It's in Dave's.
I'm looking at this.
Right.
It's, am I missing it, or?
No, it's in there.
Off the challenge, don't understand it, yeah. If I hadn't talked to Stephanie earlier, I wouldn't have...
Yeah, I'm...
It's in, in his memo. Right there. In the paragraph there, sorry. And then the detachments are included with the equipment on the back side. And then the second one is the...
What is this? This is the total grant?
That's the grant, that's the total grant amount.
I'm looking at 390,000 as the total grant amount.
Right.
And the quotes for the equipment are 186,000, 186,600 plus, and 11,750.
Right. And then the installation is the 118 from Armor.
118.
The 22 is what we spent on the LEDs out of the $390,000 grant initially.
This is, I don't like the way this is broken. Do we have to prove this, and I don't like the way this is broken out, it's hard to follow unless I sit down and read it through now. Do you want to come on up and explain what's going on here?
While he's coming up, Stephanie, could you identify what the intersections are, so the people viewing know where this work is going to be done?
Actually, Dave can, well...
So, if you recall, we, the township received two grants, the four from the, from PennDOT, totaling $390,000. So if you look at my memo dated March 11th, Stephanie, titled Arley Grant Eastern Road Adaptive Signal System, that summarizes there the total grant amounts. The LED was 90,000, the adaptive system was 300,000, totaled to 390,000. Okay. There were two separate projects, but PennDOT lumped them together. So what we did is, on the LED portion, we only spent $22,000. Significant cost reduction because the township purchased the equipment directly from the supplier, it was done under maintenance contract with Armor, there were some project management and inspection on Panoni's end, and so engineering and inspection, and also the prices of the LEDs dropped by 2/3. I mean, the price went down significantly, so therefore, we spent $22,000 on of the 90, okay? So we had that left over. We asked PennDOT, because we knew we had a shortfall, and those prices were based on $20,12, okay? And the bid was, the Arley Grant was awarded in 2013, okay? So we asked PennDOT if we could roll that money into the adaptive, because we potentially knew we would be, we would be short on the adaptive end, and they agreed that we would allow, we were allowed to do that. So we went through the design of the adaptive system, which is 611. So the system, kind of thinking a question, was what intersections? Started Kelly Road, Kelly Road and 611, Nishamini Manor and Doylestown Point Plaza, Alms House Road, the Barn Plaza, and Edison Furlong, Edison Furlong, and then also Alms House Road and the Barn Plaza, Doylestown Point. So six intersections total.
Right.
That entire corridor. That's the scope of the project for the adaptive system. So that project was designed, approved by PennDOT. We went out to bid, again, Stephanie mentioned that the equipment is proprietary, so PennDOT allowed us, first of all, they had to approve that proprietary equipment specification. So we had them do that, we had their approvals, we had them approve the system, and so we have three items here in this bid. So the bid that we went out with was for the installation of the, of the equipment. The install, we're going to cut, we're going to install new conduit, we're going to run some, you know, we need to install some more wire, auxiliary cabinets, because we don't have enough room in the existing cabinets, and Armor's going to do that, and that's going to be the, that's going to total the one...
118, 150?
Yes. Okay?
Yep.
So that's what, we're out to bid, and we opened those bids on Friday. So that's what the board needs to approve that bid recommendation that we made.
Just that one?
To start, that's one.
All right. What's the second one?
Now, because PennDOT allowed the township to purchase the equipment directly for the adaptive signal equipment and new controllers, we have two quotes, one from Rhythm Engineering for the InSync Adaptive System, which is 186,600, and then we received a quote from Signal Control Products for the Econolite controllers, which totals $11,750. So there are quotes, what we're going to do is, with board's approval then, I guess, we'll issue the township, we'll issue purchase orders and purchase that equipment directly from those suppliers, that equipment would then be given to Armor to install, okay? And then we go through the final inspection process and startup of that system. So there's a bid, award recommendation, and because of the price, I just said, we've probably should have the board approve the, those purchase orders, okay?
Is that it?
That's it, unless there are any more questions.
Does everyone understand that now?
I have a fairly good understanding.
Yeah, I'm a little better. Okay, so there, is there a motion to approve the bid for Armor and Son Electric for installation, $118,150?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there a motion to approve acquisition of the, of the hardware?
That's the 186.
$186,600 and $11,752, $50, this guy to flip.
Move to approve.
Is there a second? Second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Anything else?
That's it, thanks.
Thank you for explaining.
Sure.
Appreciate it. All right, that's that. Heritage Trail Destruction Bid, this one's not going to be that much more different, that's, this one's going to be easier, right? We've seen a lot of these.
You have, and Mr. Kelso is here, and I think...
Who do you recommend?
Well, this was bid in two different segments, and this is the trail from Turk Road along Eastern Road, up to New Britton Road, if you're going north.
Yeah.
And it's been around for, when we first started talking about it.
2002, if I remember.
Yeah, it's a good while ago. And we have a grant, the grant won't cover the entire project. And we bid it in two segments. One is the difficult portion, the work across the bridge that goes across the bypass, and the other is, I think it's about 1,000 feet on either end of that, which is more just straightforward grading and paving.
Right.
So we're recommending that the township award the bid for the bridge work to Ventresca. We were able to talk to them and reduce the scope of the project slightly, to get it within what we have budgeted for that project. And then to complete the project, the intent is to apply for some additional grants, and do some of it as we have done in the past with the township forces. So right now, we're asking the board to approve the contract with Ventresca to complete the work on the bridges.
210,800.
That was reduced down to 210,800, yes.
Okay, thank you. Does everyone understand the question, the proposal? Is there a motion to approve the award of the contract?
I'm making a motion to approve the awarding contract, 210,000.
Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Heritage, excuse me, the Pico Green Region Grant application.
Yes, and the Pico Green Region Grant, which the board knows we've received numerous times before, is for the $10,000, which is what we can get from them, would be for that section of the Heritage Trail. So hopefully, if we receive the Pico Green Region Grant, we would be able to use the grant that we have working for the portion we just approved on the bid, we would use that $10,000 to buy materials and things to build it, and offset our costs for construction of the trail portion. And we would like the board to authorize the resolution for the $10,000 Green Region Grant.
Is there a motion to authorize the application of $10,000 for this grant?
Second.
Thank you. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Doylestown Woods, dedication.
I'm sorry, before we go...
Did I miss something?
Well, just because we were doing the bridge work, and from what I understand, we didn't have enough grant money or township money to do the extension from the bridge down to Turk and complete all the trails, what is the committee's recommendation on how we would manage the rest of that work?
Well, this act, application that Stephanie just went through was part of that.
Okay.
You know, the lowest bid for that was about 90-some thousand to complete that work on either side, and that's with prevailing wages and everything. So we know we can get it done for a lot less with some grants and in-kind services. And whether it's all done in one year or not isn't, I don't think that's going to necessarily be a make or break issue on this project. We're confident we can get both ends of it done. This grant will go a long way towards materials, and it's not, it's not anything we need outside services, to a great extent on, to complete the work.
Okay.
So we, we recommend that we move ahead with it, and that we...
Yeah, I mean, I'm fine with moving ahead, that wasn't my question. My question is, I don't know how big of a gap we have to complete the trails, and it will, while we have the $10,000 grant we're going to apply for, you know, what is remaining, and what will be the township responsibility? If we take that out, take that on, what is that? So we can budget it and plan for it and stuff like that.
Well, there's probably, in terms of materials for that entire project, it's probably something on the order of about $30,000. The Pico Grant can be used for materials. They won't cover labor costs, so that $10,000 would go towards, towards that.
Okay.
And we're not opposed to, you know, coming up with other grants either.
Right, right, okay.
This is the type of project...
I was just curious what the total?
Yeah, it's the type of project, a little bit of money can go a long way on, like a lot of other ones we've done in the past.
Okay.
And that's how we're viewing it right now, and I think Dick's in tune with that, with his forces.
Thanks, Tom. Got it. All right, Doylestown Woods, you want to take this one?
Doylestown Woods is a project, I guess, over 10 years old, Mario?
At least.
At least, which is a small subdivision in northern part of the township. The developer, Toll Brothers, finally completed all the improvements, it's ready for dedication. Before you, as a resolution, I prepared setting forth your acceptance, subject to conditions, and I believe the staff would recommend the board approve the resolution.
Do you want to, you don't?
Yeah.
All right. And you recommend we take dedication?
I don't think we have a choice, I'm the MPC, and I think it's ready for dedication.
All right. Do they get their money back?
They post a bond.
$75,000?
Whatever the, 10% of the... Whatever the ten percent of the construction cost is. There's a comment in the back of the room there.
Any comments or questions for, we are from the Doylestown Woods Community Association. I'm the president of the board. I would like clarification whether the storm sewer system will be dedicated to the township.
Can I have your name?
Nedim Altaras.
Can you spell that for us?
N-E-D-I-M. Last name, Altaras, A-L-T-A-R-A-S.
Thank you.
And the reason for the question is that in the original plans, the development plan, the storm sewer system was going to be dedicated or left to the homeowner associations. And in 2012, a decision was made by the township to take dedication of that storm sewer system. And we want to make sure that's part of the dedication to the township.
That is correct. The township will be taking dedication of the road and the storm sewer system up to and into the detention basins. The basins and the outlet structures from the basins will be the homeowner's association's responsibility.
You good?
Yes.
President, a motion to approve resolution.
Second.
I'll second. Thank you. Any other questions? Good. All in favor?
Aye.
And next, a request for approval, pole barn building in the Village District.
Yes.
Mr. Wickman?
Stephanie, you want to explain why he's here?
Yes.
Mr. Wickman, I mean, you don't have to, you can sit there for a minute. If you need to talk, we'll, we'll make you get up.
Okay, yeah, I'd like to speak at some point.
Okay. Yeah. In our zoning ordinance, in the Village Center District, and I've included that for the board for reference, there is a part about the architectural qualities of a building and any building. So you have the accessory building in, in this regard. And it requires that all those permitted uses compatible in the village, the character scale, architecture, and that type be reflected. And so one of the requirements is when applying for zoning permit, which is what he's doing for this pole barn, is that that approval shall be approved by the board of supervisors.
So it's an aesthetic requirement. Because you're in a little village there, we want to make sure it's all looking good.
Exactly.
So this is what the planned pole barn.
And you have a picture as well, which the board has in their packet, that reflects how he's going to be utilizing stone on the pole barn building to sort of blend with the house.
You put this one right next to the front door?
No, actually, I was going to test the house a little.
All right, do you understand why we're here, considering this? Do you need, would you like to speak to it, sir?
Yeah, I'd like to speak just briefly. Somebody think I could. My name is David Wickman. I live at twenty-eight John Dyer Way, Doylestown. I've lived there for twenty-nine years, just outside the township, one mile from Fred Beans. I moved there from Buckingham and moved there because I needed a neighborhood when my kids were young to grow up. And in nineteen eighty, well, I met my wife out in California. Her last name is Penrose, which a lot of you might recognize that name. Her family had two hundred acres in Warrington, and Joe Penrose owned where the Bucks County Drive-In was, so it was next door. So we have some interest in historic buildings. And I also, in nineteen eighty-eight, I made a bad decision. I bought a company called Newtown Office Supply, right when Staples opened up. And I was doing four hundred thousand dollars a year. They happened to sell the township. I sold my half of the business last year, did ten million dollars. My partner's afraid if I didn't sell it, I'd, wouldn't be able to, he wouldn't be able to afford to buy me, buy me out. But people ask always why I wouldn't move to Newtown when I own a business, and it's because I had a great love of Doylestown. I've been very active with Mitchram Museum. I'm on the board of Mercy Museum. And would like, now that I've retired, to actually get more involved with Doylestown Township. I've lived in this area, first Buckingham, and then, you know, for, since nineteen seventy-six, when I came back from California, got married, I met my wife when she was out in school. So I really want to do everything I can to make this, I plan on living there, so I want to make this, you know, as nice a place as I can. And I also wanted to say, I've, you know, worked in Newtown, I live now in Plumstead, I lived in Buckingham, and dealing with Doylestown Township, some of the people have really been outstanding, and I wanted to thank them. Sinclair Salisbury has been extremely helpful. I, I don't, I know how to run a ten million dollar business, but your codes confuse the heck out of me.
Yeah.
And Matty has also been very helpful. And also Stephanie has been helpful to me because it's all very confusing. And what I want to do is build something that will, will help the, I mean, will look nice. If you're familiar with that area at all, I don't know whether you are, you know, I have a, some, across the way, there's a bunch of abandoned trucks that aren't particularly attractive. And I don't know whether I can submit anything, but this is actually, the Spring House is actually across the street, so I don't have a well. I tried to see if I could hook up to the public sewer, but it's only a half a block away, but they said, you know, it wouldn't be worthwhile, so I have to put in a twelve thousand dollar well and a septic tank. But I'm a little concerned also just about, because I have, I have, you know, places around me that are a little polluted. This, if I can just show you, is a building north of it, which I've already contacted the owner. I'm a little concerned about, you know, any kind of toxic, you know, waste there. Evidently, there are some trucks stored there, so that's a little bit of a concern to me also, and I'm trying to buy that property possibly. But I want to do everything I can to work with the township to make the building look attractive. You know, I, a mile from the center of town, or probably two miles maybe, and, you know, would like to do whatever I can to make the building attractive and be a good neighbor and live there. It is, and it's.
And we've done a lot of work, Tom, Stephanie, and the different committees, trying to get that area up to higher standards and stuff.
One thing you may not even realize, that the house I bought actually used to stand across the road, and it was built in nineteen sixteen. I have, in your packet, you have a picture of the original house, and the road actually went through the center of the house. And the house was actually cut down and moved back, so the, so the house actually went to the red line, you know, across the street. So somewhat of a historic house. I have all the records here, going back from nineteen thirty-six on, and I'm paying Doylestown Historical Society three hundred dollars to find out what happened from nineteen sixteen to nineteen thirty-six. I met the Max and Dorothy Smith owned the house, and Dorothy died last year, one day short of a hundred and five years old. So I met her son, that's who I bought it. He has Alzheimer's, and I've been able to get some information. I also met Scott Sees, his name is, who's the grandson. And he's told me information, which I don't know whether it's true, I kind of doubt it. He said that originally, that there was a, I have it here, the Turk Inn was there, and I believe the Turk Inn actually was below it, so I'm not sure, but I'm trying to check that also. And that's one of the many places that supposedly George Washington, Georgia, Washington had a drink, you know. I think he's had a drink and slept everywhere. But, but I, I believe that's a place that's below it. But I really want to work with the township any way I can to have this attractive. The pole barn is going to be located at the back of the property. It drops off quite a bit. I don't even think it's going to be visible from the street. So, and I intend to rehab the house. I, I've gutted the house completely at this point, down to the stone walls. Tend to rehab it, that, that handicap ramp is coming out, and I tend to, I plan on living there, and I want to make it as, as attractive as, as possible. The other thing I'll just mention is, I raised, I was just honored, I've raised over fifty thousand dollars for MS. I raise ten thousand dollars a year for MS, and my wife unfortunately has second stage progressive MS. She's moving into, into Wesley Enhanced Living April sixteenth, so naturally, I want to be close. I've been married thirty-nine years, and it's one of those things where it's affecting her, she has dementia now from the MS, and it's affecting it. So naturally, I want to be close to where she, you know, will be. We still intend to be married. I just can't, it's gotten to be too much for me. I can't take care of her anymore. My blood pressure a couple weeks ago went to two oh five over one ten, and my doctor said, you need to make some changes in your life, so. But that's, as I said, I'd like to cooperate in, and I can't, any way I can, it's just confusing with, you know, some of the laws and, you know, whatever, so.
I have one question, Jeff.
Okay.
Well, one, it looks like an ambitious project, looks like a good project. I just had a question about the photo with, just a curiosity, of the sycamore. Is that just a point of reference to show there's a, you know, a significance of the trees in that, or is that idea of placement of the building in that?
Now, the sycamore, that was one thing that my wife wanted to save, and the pole barn's actually going to be behind it. We've, we've saved the, the sycamore. And, and my idea with the pole barn, just so you know, I'm sure most of you know Jack Thompson. I'm friendly with him. He has a hundred cars in Dublin. I, I don't have near, near that many. But this is Jack's fax that just came out Saturday, and there's a picture of one of my cars that I'm storing. They actually put a new engine in it. I'm storing it right now over at Uncle Bob's storage. It cost me two hundred and twenty-five dollars for a ten by thirty storage unit. And I have ten cars, so it's costly storing these things places. And I, I like cars collecting, and want to have a nice pole barn.
So that'll be your primary use, is using this for storage for your cars?
It'll only be for storage for cars. What I'd like to do, at least according to my understanding, is I have a friend that has a lot of cars, and I'm able to rent part of it to a friend to store cars, but nothing would be stored in there other than, than antique automobiles.
Board, board is actually to approve the issues of the permit for the pole barn.
Well, let's see if we can get this one decision out of the way for you, huh? Is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second that.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, you're good to go.
Thank you very much.
Good luck with your projects. Mr. Everett?
Well, I, I, I.
Dick. So you can be heard to the CV viewing line?
I didn't want to kick him out, but I'm, the, what zoning is in there?
Village, talent.
And I see there's vinyl siding. That's not very historic. I didn't know if there's some, is there some prohibition against? Not in the historic district. Okay.
And vinyl, I can operate from steel, normally it's steel, but I can operate it.
No, I understand. I just had a question about what was appropriate for there, because I'm kind of a neighbor and, and I kind of look down in that little valley. And I appreciate what you're doing there. I, I think I saw your brother-in-law eating a lot of sawdust and, and plaster.
I was just watching inside of the bathroom, and.
Actually, I got some of your lap, I'm using for my daughter's wedding. Cycling it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Wickman. Good luck with your project.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, summer performing arts schedule. Looks very ambitious, Karen. Before us is the, what Karen anticipates to be the schedule for two thousand and fifteen. Is this just for information? Do we need to pass on it? You would like our blessing?
I would like your blessing. You're moving the course. I'm.
There'll be some other contracts that'll be coming, but yes, we're looking forward to.
We're not approving any contracts tonight.
No, but she would like to engage these people.
You have a certain level of authority, they need to get your blessing to secure the contracts, and it's kind of, which came first, the chicken or the egg?
Is there a motion to approve the schedule?
I'll make a motion to approve the schedule.
Second that.
Thank you. Conversation, discussion?
Just, it's not about having these specific concerts. My question was more around where the concert is going to be.
Prior, as we went into the season, we, the band show was coming up. We weren't there. We, we have a long time partnership with The Borough. The Borough would like to see, they're fine, based on our conversation, to go forward when the concert's here. They'd like to wrap it up this year while the Showmobile's for sale and kind of eat through this one year. We've had eight concerts.
So it'll be The Borough and the township.
We have eight concerts. We certainly would not want to hamper our relationship and our partnership that we have developed over the years. Certainly, it's your decision. We have reached out to The Borough to see if they'd be willing to maintain their partnership this year. Talked about moving them all to Central Park this year, which was not the original intent this year going forward. After this year, that certainly was the intent.
Now, I understand The Borough wants, is going to continue in this partnership. I mean, we, we are together, the sounds of. I mean, we, we are together, this sounds a song.